Today is September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It is five thirty P. M. And we are in the Bosch Freilich Meeting Room at Mandan City Hall. Mr. Newbauer, could you please call the roll?
Commissioners Schoberg.
Here.
Heinzchon.
Here.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Here.
Mayor Freilich.
Here. At this time, I ask you to please stand, and Mandan Police Officer Tucker Williams will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tucker. Now we will proceed to announcements, quarterly employee anniversary recognitions. Amy?
Hello? Can everyone hear me okay? I don't know. That's working, but thank you for everyone for coming. Can't believe we're already in quarter three of the year, but always an excited, exciting meeting to announce the milestones of different employees who have reached various years of service with the city of Mandan. It must have been a busy night tonight because we didn't have a lot of the group that could come. They had prior commitments, but we still want to read off their names and acknowledge them. So I will do that first, and then we will call up those that are here. So for those that could not be here with three years of service, we have Angela Black. She is our K nine police officer, Stephen Ann Haltz, our part-time firefighter, Tyler Bane, mechanic with Public Works, Colton Turnus, equipment operator two with Public Works, Adam Elliston, equipment operator two forestry, and Brenton Beckler, senior building worker at the library. And for fifteen years of service, we have Chad Niklos, firefighter and EMT. So then moving on to those who were able to make it tonight, we'll call your name up, and Mayor Freilich will congratulate you and thank you and give you your certificate, and then we'll get a picture at the end as well. So starting with five years of service, we have Brenda Johnson, our senior real property appraiser. Congratulations, Brenda. And then we also have five years of service, Lindsay Gerhart, our airport manager. Congrats, Lindsay. So that's who we have tonight. Thank you, everyone, for your years of service.
Okay, Police Department new employee introduction. Chief Ziegler?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I've got three employees to introduce. The first one is going to be Tucker Williams, Officer Tucker Williams. He is currently lives in Mandan. He is a graduate from Red River High School, Grand Forks, so he comes from the east side of the state. He's also a University of North Dakota graduate with a bachelor's degree in public affairs. He's married and has an eighteen-month-old son, likes golfing, watching sports, especially the NFL and NHL. He also plays in a men's hockey league here in Mandan, so he's real active, and we're blessed to have him. He's almost finished with his field training, so he'll be getting out there here shortly. So it's a blessing to have him onboard. Next one is going to be Andrea Anderson. She's a graduate from Legacy. We won't hold that against her, but she did come to the right side of the river because she now lives in Mandan, and she enjoys reading and being with her family and going camping with her family. So it's a, she's one of our code enforcement officers, and she has been doing an outstanding job, and we are truly, truly blessed to have her onboard. And then my next one, Allison Pressler. Allison is living in Bismarck. I couldn't persuade her to come over to Mandan's side. She said maybe in the future, but I, you know, she sees how beautiful our city is, and hopefully she'll make that move in the future. She actually comes from Lemon, South Dakota. That's where she went to high school and graduated from. She is a graduate from Dickinson State University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, so maybe there's a future with her to put the blue uniform on. And a couple of things that she enjoys is she enjoys spending time with her family, hunting, and being able to be outside when it's nice. She is another blessing to us and a code enforcement officer. She, the two code enforcement ladies are doing an outstanding job trying to keep up on things. I know it can be overwhelming with the jobs that they do, and it's, but, but as, as young as they are and as, as active, we got three really good employees here, so it's been a blessing to be their chief.
Thank you. Tucker, Andrea, and Allison, welcome. Next, Shane O'Keefe with Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Street Department down at Public Works is happy to announce one of our new hires here, Jace Rebel. Came from us from Dickinson. He did some training at the SWCTE in equipment operating, and we've had him here since May, and we're, it's great to have him, and he's been a great employee.
Welcome, Jace. Next, Jerick from Engineering will give us a construction update.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I do have pulled up on my screen, yeah, a little presentation. So we have five active projects that I have updates for. First on the list is Memorial Highway. Recent work includes installation of a sixty-inch storm sewer on the south side of the road. The storm sewer crew is approaching Fortieth Avenue southeast. They were working east to west, so they're nearing the Fortieth intersection. New six-inch water services are complete on the south side from forty-sixth to Fortieth, and sanitary sewer is being complete on the east end near forty-sixth and is being worked on at Fortieth Avenue. And paving is continuing around the Forty-Sixth Street intersection. I just got word today from the DOT that that, they're anticipating opening that the week of the twenty-second instead of on the twenty-second due to the rain delay today. There's been a lot of questions around winter shutdowns related to these projects, so I'm going to have a little winter, fall-winter update for each of these. Winter shutdown for this project, the contractor is still aiming to meet the goal of having a paved main line surface by the end of the season. Some of the project accelerating solutions that have been identified and implemented, one additional underground crew is mobilized, being mobilized this week. A third underground crew is going to be mobilized next week. GeoGrid is replacing subgrade preparation, which is more, which is less sensitive to moisture in the ground, and then a monolithic concrete pore of curb and curb and travel lanes was authorized by NDDOT district staff, which would just cut down on the amount of, the amount of pores that need to take place for the product. That's what I have related to Memorial Highway. I'm going to pause here and ask if there's any questions.
Why is monolithic concrete?
Monolithic would be they, they pour it all at once, and then they're going to cut in the joints rather than doing two separate pores. Yep.
That's a term I wasn't aware of. Thank you.
Yep.
Jerick, can you remind me of the end date for this season that they were looking at?
I believe it was November twenty-third is the end date. I, I think that's the date that they have in mind.
Jerick, there are, there are plans in place in the event that weather continues to be a challenge. Per far is preparing for winter, correct?
Correct, yep. There, there's pivot plans identified, but, but the plan right now is to stay the course.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Then I'll move on. Water treatment plant phase three optimization project. Recent work here includes driveway replacement near the groundwater lift station, a new CO2 tank slab, which we are looking at on the screen right now, and sheet piling for the lime silo foundation, and then work began at the lime foundation. For the winter continuation on this project, this one's a little different than the others because it will, work will continue into the winter. Fall work will consist of lime silo, concrete, and site work, railroad spur work, and roofing, and then once winter hits, we'll move operations indoors, where some, some indoor work includes lime blowout valves, filters five, six, and seven, lime slaker installation, some of that chemical feed system on the inside of the building. So that's what's going on out there. Any questions related to that project?
Mayor, I have a question. Not too long ago, we were having problems with our water intake in the sand bill up and shifting the river. Is that still a problem, or is that subsided?
Mayor Commissioner Roar, there has been kind of a medium, medium-term temporary kind of solution identified and implemented that should get us through the winter, but we were, we are looking for more long-term solutions and implementations in the next construction season to, to try and wrap that up. But I can follow up with a, with a more descriptive update on that one if you prefer.
As time goes on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Moving on, Collins Avenue Reservoir. Recent work includes wall and dome panels. Form work for wall and dome slots began, and planning to place concrete for wall and dome slots this week. I do have some pictures in here, and I also included some kind of cool videos here. We have some drone shots for, this is the foundation pore that took place in the early mornings a few weeks back. Just kind of a cool look at the operations there. I know a lot of people don't get to see up and over the retaining wall there sometimes. Good to see what's going on. In addition to that, I do have, whoops, let's see if I can, see if I can get to the next page. There we go. I do have another video just showing, showing those panel placements on the top of the reservoir. Once again, just another good look at the crane operations and get kind of an appreciation for the complexity of the project. Winter shutdown, the new reservoir should be online in late November this year. We would expect exterior finishes to finish in the, or to be completed in the spring, and that would include like retaining wall work. We're going to peel that retaining wall back to help line of sight issues, the demolition of the existing reservoir, and then also reservoir painting. Any questions related to the reservoir project?
Okay. Jerick, I'm kind of, kind of enjoy the engineering aspect, but when we look at the grid inside, is that steel fabrication covered with something to prevent rust over a long period? The same with the cement base?
Mayor Commissioner, I would have to probably look in or get answers from our consultants, but I believe that they would, they would be treating, treating that to prevent rusting. Yeah. Our two thousand and twenty-four street reconstruction project, this is the project that took place in the low strata area and the Shady Acres area. The project is substantially complete right now. We have a walk-through scheduled for this Friday, and at that walk-through, what we will do is go in and inspect all the work done to date and, and put together a punch list of items that need to be completed prior to final project closeout. So if anybody notices any issues in the area that still need to be remedied, let us know, and we'll make sure that those get added to the punch list. They would likely be finishing the punch list items before the, before the winter closeout, and then we will have a spring, a spring two thousand and twenty-six chip seal to follow, and that is planned. So any questions related to the two thousand and twenty-four reconstruction project?
What's the, the winter date for these projects, the neighborhood projects?
Mayor Commissioners, I don't know the winter close-down date contractually for each of the projects, but I'd imagine that it's just going to depend on snow. Most of these, most of these contractors are going to be past where they need to be contractually, so they're just going to do as much work as they possibly can before that, before they're physically unable to continue doing it. Yeah. Then we have our two thousand and twenty-five street reconstruction project. This is occurring in the Monte Drive area, just west of Lewis and Clark Elementary. All water main is installed. Pressure tests and chlorination is to be completed this week, and then after that, all the new mains are going to be fully operational and integrated into our system. Crews are working to finish the concrete work prior to the winter shutdown, and a pressure relief valve is going to be delivered in October, and that installation will be at the corner of Monte Drive and Sixth, kind of in that acute angle intersection. For winter shutdown, contractor is still on track to substantially complete the project before winter. That is essentially full completion of the project, and they're still aiming for that. Worst-case scenario would be that they would include one base lift of asphalt across the entire project area and wrap up in, in the spring, but that's where we're at right now. Any questions related to that project?
Jerick, maybe for the Monte Drive area. I'm not sure about the area, I think it was Christ King, but. I know the, the water tower area presented the same problems with a lot of buried debris from projects spanning the last fifty or sixty years, so that cost them some time as well as the weather. Is that correct?
On the reservoir project, yes.
And also on Monte Drive, they were pulling some stuff out of there too, I believe.
I think that they did encounter some unexpected stuff underground, mostly related, what I'm most aware of is, is related to the depth of the berry on some of the old lines where they'd have to, where they had to make transition to a deeper berry and stuff like that. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? I think that was, that was my last slide, unless you need anything else from me.
Mayor and Jerick, just one thing I forgot on the Memorial Highway. For people watching, to reiterate that the asphalt surface is a temporary surface. I still get asked that multiple times a week. I'm sure you do as well, but let the viewers know that that is temporary, right?
Mayor Commissioner, yes, that asphalt, the current asphalt surface is a temporary surface meant to be pulled out and replaced with the finished concrete surface. Also, if for any reason that the concrete surface wasn't ready for the winter and we needed to pivot to some other option, it would be leveled out. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be going up and down like that, so it is by no means permanent.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep. That's what I have.
Okay, stay standing. Or is Shane going to take this one, the number four, item number four, water main break?
I'm going to let Shane take this one.
Good afternoon, Mayors, Mayor and Commissioners. Just wanted to talk about the water main break, the service interruption that the city of Mandan had over in, mainly on First Street. The major break was on First and Seventh, and then we had a break in between Tenth and Eleventh, also on First. It happened about yesterday about five o'clock when we were notified. I'm happy to announce, oh, sorry, there was actually three breaks. There was another one earlier this morning up on Eighth and Fifth. So from one, it turned into three really fast in under about twelve hours. We have repaired two of them. I'm hoping here in the next hour that we are all back and running, water running to everyone in the city. Again, this is down in the two-B area from last year, so First Street is, in the last week, we've had, this is the fourth water main break in this area in seven days.
Shane, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mayor Shane, what, why does the causation that we're having all these here within that geographic area, what, what is happening that's causing this? I know we're not in the middle of winter where the ground is freezing.
Yeah, nothing specific to pinpoint other than just the age of the infrastructure. Could, any, any type of shift could possibly, we find any defect in the pipe could cause that, cause it to, that initial break. So we're just down to that deteriorated pipe that is just so brittle and at any second possibly can break.
Okay.
Same question.
Yep. And then the first break we found was a twelve-inch water main, so it caused a lot of water to run through that system very fast. So that could have caused the other ones to follow behind it, where it found the next weakest point because the water was going so fast.
And Shane, the footprint of that water shutdown for yesterday was rather significant. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is, that is correct, Commissioner. It, it, it put out a handful of businesses for the day and quite a few residents. I know I talked to a few of the residents today. They were, they were happy we're there, getting everything up and running. You know, one even made a mention, he'll be fine. He has beer. There's water and beer.
Shane, how do we go about notifying the residents or the businesses when they're out of water?
Last night, once I was notified, I wrote up a social media post for our community team or communication team to disperse out onto Facebook. We also ran a reverse nine-one-one. If they're signed up for that, it will send them a text message that they're, the outage, about the outage of the water.
Okay. And do we have a dollar amount assigned to each break?
Mayor, it does vary a little bit. I'm getting information right now from my, my team back here. About thirty-six thousand would be a rough average.
Per break?
Per break. So when we applied for our build grant for Mandan proper, we calculated the cost per water main break, and it was thirty-six thousand per water main break.
And we've had how many in that area as of right now?
As of right now, the new count that I added up today was seventeen.
Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate that update. Now we will move on to item number five under announcements. Chief Ziegler? This is regarding camper and trailer parking.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is just to inform the, the public about the ordinance on trailers and campers parked in front of their residents. From September fifteenth to May fifteenth, there's a restriction that you're not allowed to park your campers or your trailers in front of your home. If they, if you do, it could be a fifty-dollar fine. Fines can be stacked from day to day, so if you violate it today and you don't move it tomorrow, we come back, we can hit you with another fifty-dollar fine, or we could tow your vehicle. Your, your trailer can be towed also. We prefer for the officers to try to educate people before they do that, even when it comes to sighting, people try to get out there and say, hey, listen, could you please move your trailer off the street? This is mostly for safety reasons. If snow comes and stuff, the, the snowplows have to get through. Trailers and campers on the street can cause some issues, so it's, it's mostly to help and, and do that. And then May fifteenth, you can pull them back out, and the twelve-hour loading and unloading ordinance goes back into effect. So again, if you do violate it, it can be up to a fifty-dollar, it could be a fifty-dollar fine per day that you violate it, or the vehicle may be towed.
Any questions for Chief Ziegler?
Just a comment, Mayor. Chief, I know one of the other reasons is the amount of equity. Our people who have campers and boats, and they will stick a sizable amount of money in to making sure they're not on a street, and they'll put in a camper pad in these places, so they, they spend their money where others, they, you know, they get to park on the street, you know, free, so to speak, without having to make that investment. So there's some of that, too.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Roar, that's correct. And if for some reason you have to unload something, or, you know, you need some time to do something, you're moving, or that's not what this is for. This is mostly for the people who just park them there and they don't move them. If you're going to do that, you can get that, a call down to the police department and just let us know. That way we understand. So if we get complaints and stuff, we know that you, what you're doing, that you're there, you're moving. We understand all that stuff. So that doesn't mean like if you got a U-Haul trailer and you're unloading and, and packing and stuff like that, that, that's not what this is for. This is for people who perch their trailers or their campers in front of their, their residents for a long period of time.
Okay. Hate to think about winters right around the corner, but I guess it could. We get snow next month. Now we will move to item number six, art alley update. Mr. Newbauer?
Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, as you probably have seen, the alley just to the south of Vicki's, north of Butcher Block and that area, I don't know why I said Vicki's first, but it's, it's around the corner. The Art Alley is going along quite nicely. Bring up a couple of pictures from that area. Get those put up on the screen. That is Richard Lowen. He was quite pleased that we were going to take his picture and, and show him tonight at the commission meeting. So again, these are pretty cool things, and credit to, I think Andrew Stromy, who spearheaded this project, and also with Aaron Barth from the Northern Plains Heritage for providing some funding and logistics behind the scenes. Bring up a couple, a couple more. So again, really positive comments on the, the art that's being done and the representation of Mandan. You can see here the railroad bridge, the rail yard, some of the other Native American history. One that's particularly interesting, I guess, to me is, is that in, within this braid that you see, you'll find things like the railroad, you find bison, you'll find the railroad bridge, you'll find Native American dancers, you'll find cowboys, you'll find crying hill, all kinds of things if you stop and, you know, take a look. How they do this, I don't have any idea. I am a terrible stick figure drawer, and that's about the extent of my artistic ability, but like I said, if you have an opportunity to walk through the alley, please, if you see someone back there on scaffolding and painting, don't drive through the alley and be courteous and kind and give them some room to operate, because like I said, a lot of these take a lot of time, effort, energy, and a lot of talent. So it's pretty cool stuff, and we encourage everyone to take a look through, you know, take a walk downtown and, and look at the changes. These are, I'm not sure if we have five of them up, and I think we're scheduled for about fifteen different projects. So again, it's nice to see them going up and a lot of positive comments throughout the community on this project. So.
Any questions for Mr. Newbauer? Thank you, Jim. Now we'll move on to public comment. I'm just going to read the policy, and then I'll ask Mr. Newbauer if we have any. The Mandan City Commission values public input. To speak, submit a complete, completed speaker card before the meeting begins. Comments must be related to an item on the current or previous meeting agenda. Speakers have three minutes each in the order the cards are received. The total comment period is limited to thirty minutes, and at this time, I will ask Mr. Newbauer if any comments or cards.
Mayor Freilich, we have not received any comments.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will move on to the approval of the agenda. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, a second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Heinzchon.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Move on to the minutes. Consider approval of the September second, two thousand and twenty-five Board of City Commission. Consider approval of the September 2nd, 2025 Board of City Commission Meeting Minutes.
I'll make a move, a motion to accept minutes of the September 2nd, 2025 Commission Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. And we, with that, right at six o'clock, Mr. Newbauer? How's that for timing? We will open the public hearing regarding ordinance number 1473, the 2026 budget. Greg?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Just to recap, on August 5th, the Budget and Finance Committee presented the preliminary 2026 budget to the City Commission and the board approved the introduction and first consideration and call for a public budget hearing of ordinance 1473 adopting the preliminary 2026 budget. This evening is the publicly noticed time and place for the City Commission to hear any and all protests or objections to the items or amounts set forth in the city's preliminary 2026 budget statement. Up to late this afternoon, the Finance Department did not receive any comments from the public concerning the city's preliminary 2026 budget. But we did receive a comment late this afternoon. The property owner wanted some information on how the city computed its property taxes in, in, in reference to House Bill 1176, which is better known as the 3% property tax cap. Just for everyone's information, the city is only utilizing a 2.3% property tax increase for the 2026 budget. The maximum is 3% plus the allowance for new growth on top of that. The property owner just wanted to know what the sources of data that the city used, all the schedules and the information to support how it calculated the property taxes for the 2026 budget. So the Finance Department will provide that information to the, to the taxpayer. At the end of the public hearing, I recommend that the City Commission make a motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 1473, which is the 2026 budget. And then finally, on October 7th, the City Commission will need to approve the second and final consideration of ordinance 1473 adopting the final 2026 budget for the city and making the annual tax levy for 2025. And then there was a, a question regarding the airport from the same property owner. And Lindsay's not here, but that would be a question for her. So I, I, I can't answer that question regarding the airports.
Okay. So are you going to follow up with Lindsay?
I will. Yes, yes. We will follow up.
And we'll get them an answer.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we will open the public hearing. And we'll entertain comments regarding the ordinance number 1473, the 2026 budget. Second call for comments. Third and final call for comments. Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Commissioners?
I'll move to close the public hearing for ordinance number 1473.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Heinzchen, a second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Motion passes. And at this time, we will move on to item number two. Consider a prelim, preliminary plat for Evergreen Heights 5th Edition. Jordan?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Give me a second. Let me get this pulled up. Or not. There's so much public work stuff going on. I can't, I can't keep track of it all here. Give me a second. All right, here we go. This evening, we're looking at a public hearing for the preliminary plat for Evergreen Heights 5th Edition. This item was tabled at the July Planning and Zoning Commission and then approved with conditions at the August Planning and Zoning Commission. This is, let me get my screen up here. Sorry for all the scrolling. Maybe a location map would help.
This is Rachel Lockway. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Rachel. We can hear you, Rachel. The preliminary plat is up on the screen now. It includes an area off of 14th Avenue Southeast and 16th Street Southeast. And this is a, just the plat that would be continuing these lots for this preliminary, preliminary plat. Some of the items that staff has been looking at was just in the plat. There were some things that we're working on, yet Living Water Drive, this 33 feet is not what we would like to see.
Okay, I'm so sorry. There's a really significant delay. I'm signed into the public one and I really apologize. I can go over the plat if you'd like, or Jordan can, if that's easier. There do seem to be some technical issues right now.
I'll let her do it. All right, I can do it because I think she's behind. She's watching the live feed. Can you hear me, Rachel? Can you hear me, Rachel? She can't hear us. But we're going to continue on. This living, this section of Living Water Drive that we're looking at, the, the city doesn't want to keep this. So the plan is we're, we're having a meeting with the parties involved for this, remember, preliminary plat in a couple of days to work out the kinks in this. But at the end of the day, staff recommends approval of this and we have the contingencies in your packet as well. But this is a public hearing and I would ask that you open that. And if you have any questions, feel free.
This is live TV, Jordan.
You know it.
Yep. Any questions for Jordan? If not, thank you, Jordan. And at this time, we will open the public hearing to consider a preliminary plat for Evergreen Heights 5th Edition. Please state your name and.
My name is Ben Capel. So I'm one of the purchasers and I'm also the Realtor that would represent all of the buyers in this agreement. Basically, planning and zoning, we had very long meetings. I want to respect everybody's time. I think we have all the kinks worked out. This has been in the process since the start of the year and I think my neighbors have been trying to get this done for like 10 years. So I moved in. I'm trying to get this done as a real estate agent. So I just wanted to come up and if I need to explain anything, especially from the buyer's side, the seller's agent is here too and the seller. Basically, we have two parties in agreement with the plan. We have land that we're changing its use. I would argue that its highest and best use is to be absorbed into our lots. I can go into that further if you want me to, but I also understand there's a lot on the agenda today. So would there be any questions for me at all on this drawing?
The, the, the way I understand it is that most of the property owners, if not all, are very amicable about this and, and you're very, very close to tying the knot, so to speak.
Yes, yes, very close. Yep.
Okay. That's my major concern.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Excuse me, my name is Tricia Dietz. I am the real estate agent representing the seller in this, in this transaction. I just also wanted to just kind of come up and make sure that we can answer any questions or address any potential, I guess, concerns, if any, on, on all of this. Yes, as Ben said, we have been working on this since, since the start of the year, since about February of 25 here. I have represented Val in the listing of this since the beginning of 2024. So there's definitely some history in, in the development potential of this. And we've also kind of, through the planning and zoning meeting, ran through several different options as been addressed in highest and best use, as well as, you know, other, other options. I am continuing to work, I'm a part of the meeting here at the end of this week in continuing to work out that last little kink with, with the Living Water Drive, just making sure that questions are answered and addressed and, and in the best, you know, situation for all parties involved in this.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Commissioners?
I'll move to approve the preliminary plat for Evergreen Heights 5th Edition contingent on final plat approvals and the vacation of Living Water Drive being completed prior to any approval of the final plat.
Second.
Did we need a motion to close the hearing?
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoberg and a second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We'll move on to bids. Consider bids for shores at Lakewood Phase 2 Storm Sewer Improvements. Jerick?
Mayor and Commissioners, on August 28th, we opened bids for a combined bid package that included storm sewer improvements as well as san, water and sanitary sewer improvements for the shores at Lakewood Phase 2 Infrastructure Project. I'm going to pull up a little Google Maps here so we can all orient ourselves. Shores at Lakewood Phase 2 would be an extension of shores at Lakewood Phase 1, which was the construction of McKenzie Drive to the west and Dutton Circle. Shores, shores Phase 2 would continue construction to the south around this loop and constructs Oxbow Trail as a secondary access connection on the south side here, as well as an extension on the west side over here. As part of this bid package, the city had base bid one and alternate one, which represented a storm sewer construction to be completed this fall. And then alternate one was the same storm sewer construction to be completed this spring. We received bids from Crow River, Site Works Excavation and Coffles to complete this work. And the low bid was received from Site Works in the amount of $393,803.50. And it is our recommendation to award the contract for base bid one to Site Works Excavation. And I would be happy to answer any questions related to this.
Any questions for Jerick?
Mayor Jerick, wasn't Oxbow supposed to be extended back there? Was, because was the missile going to have something constructed back there? Wasn't Oxbow supposed to come around behind there and a roadway actually finished there sometime?
Mayor Commissioner Roar, yes, Oxbow Trail would, would wrap around the backs of these houses on Lillian Court and connect back up into the shore, shores Phase 2 development.
I know right now there's a damn bridge that goes across there. Is that, is it temporary thing or is that going to be made into actually a bridge that provides access?
Mayor Commissioner, I believe that would be the approximate location, approximate location of, of where that connection would be made.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Jerick? Okay, thank you, Jerick. Commissioners?
I'll move to award the contract for bid base one to Site Works Excavation.
Second. A second.
Motion by Commissioner Schoberg, second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes, motion passes. Onto the consent agenda. Are there any items, Commissioners, that you would like removed from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to poll number 10 just for further clarifications from Chief.
Okay, item number 10 is polled. Any other items? If not, I would look for a motion to approve items one through nine and 11.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number 10 on the consent agenda. Consider approval of the Motorola Solutions Body Cam Agreement. Chief?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and, was it Commissioner Schoberg? I was behind the pillar that had it polled or?
It was me.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we're good. Just a question on, well, first off, I think the, having the unlimited storage, I mean, video files are large, so I like seeing that and that, I think. Don't want to get into a bind on storage costs, but just curious if we add officers in the next three years, is the rate fall under, would the additional body cams fall under that contracted price for the next three years? Or would that be a separate addition, a different contract at a different rate? That was my own question on that piece.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Heinzchen. What I do when I do my budget, when we add people, personnel to staff with body cams, I add that into the equipment budget. As far as the storage and stuff, it's, it's the package deal. There may be an upcharge on it if we go over a certain limit. Usually what they do is they'll say up to 55 personnel using it or whatever it is, number of cameras. You get this price and if it goes above that, then we would have to come back for a budget amendment to adjust it. But what this does, it locks us into today's prices for an extension of three years. And it's just for the storage and stuff, the equipment we already have and own.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for Chief Ziegler?
I'll make the motion to approve item 10, the Motorola Solutions Body Cam Agreement.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Heinzchen, second by Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. There is no old business to consider and not to new business. Item number one, consider approval of the verification of five special assessment districts. And they are as follows. One, Street Improvement District 231, 8th Avenue Northwest. Street Improvement District 235, Street Rehabilitation 2024. Trail Improvement District 1, Highway 6 Trail. Trail Improvement District 2, Old Red Trail, Shared Use Path, Mill and Overlay. And Water and Sewer District 64 Northwest Trunk Sewer. Jerick?
Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. On August 20th, the Special Assessment Commission met and held a public hearing related to the special assessment districts before you today. We did not have any public input at that meeting. And the Special Assessment Commission verified the special assessments as they were presented at that meeting. And I don't believe that any changes have been made since then. What I will do for you today is I will do a quick description of the projects and then our recommendation is to approve the special assessments as presented. But 8th Avenue Northwest was, is the first project on the list here. This included the reconstruction of 8th Avenue Northwest between Old Red Trail and 24th Street. This included sidewalk work adjacent to the new high school, as well as some water and sewer work at the intersection of 24th Street Northwest and 8th Avenue Northwest. Second on the list is Street Improvement District number 230, 235. Yep, this would be our 2024 Street Reconstruction Project. This is split into two areas. Area one, we know as Shady Acres. This included a variety of street rehabilitation efforts that included chip seals, mill and overlays, and then full-depth reclamation and reconstruction, as well as some drainage improvements on Main Street East and some striping improvements along. improvements on Main Street East and some striping improvements along Missouri Drive. Trail District One was Highway Six, oh, Area Two in District Two Thirty-Five was the low strata area. This also included street improvements that ranged from chip seals, mill and overlays, and full-depth reclamation. This also had fourth scope that included water main replacement and street reconstruction. There was a lot of ADA ramp improvements in the area, as well as tree trimming on, in both areas of this, this project. Trail District One is the Highway Six Trail. This is the third phase of an effort to connect Fort Lincoln Elementary Trails to the Hart River Bridge Trail System, and this particular leg was from Nineteenth Street Southeast to the bridge itself. This was constructed last, last summer, and this, the improvements on this project would be special assessed back to the Mandan Parks District. Trail District Number Two is the Old Red Trail Shared Use Path Mill and Overlay Project. This included mill and overlay from Thirtieth Avenue Northwest to Sunset Drive on the southwest side of Old Red Trail. This would, this project would also be special assessed back to Mandan Parks District. It should be noted that both Old Red Trail Mill and Overlay Project and Highway Six Trail received about eighty percent federal funding through the Transportation Alternatives Program. So a lot of federal funds on those projects. And then our last project for your consideration tonight is our Water and Sewer District Number Sixty-four Project. This is our Northwest, whoops, Northwest Trunk Sewer Project. The city participated in, in a project that included the upsizing of some sanitary sewer up in the northwest portion of town. This was a, primarily a developer-led project through, there was three or four developers in the area that needed sanitary sewer installation, and it was in everybody's best interest. It was kind of mutually beneficial to have a combined project in which the city could upsize the sewer and serve the area to the north of this, of this development. In your packet, we have estimated costs, estimated or proposed assessment terms, and estimated interest rates. We're recommending approval of the special assessments, but I can answer any questions if you have any more.
Any questions for Jerick? If not, thank you, Jerick. What are your wishes, Commissioners?
I'll move to approve the special assessments for Street Improvement Districts Number Two Thirty-One and Two Thirty-Five, Trails Improvement District Number One and Two, and Water Sewer District Sixty-four.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Heinchan, second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number two, under new business, consider Class A liquor license transfer from Lonesome Dove Bar to Missouri Riverboat Incorporated. Mr. Newbauer?
Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, we do have a request to, as you indicated, transfer a liquor license from Lonesome Dove to Missouri Riverboat, Inc. This would be a, subject to the one-time transfer. When the city Mandan adjusted the municipal code roughly about ten years ago, we provided existing Class A liquor license holders a one-time transfer, and Lonesome Dove has not changed ownership or operators since that time. Therefore, they are entitled to the one-time change, transfer. To be noted would be that, if the commission approves this transfer, the Missouri Riverboat, Inc., that license would not be transferable to another party. Another party would need to come in and, in essence, buy a new license from the city. The, there's been a background check done, property taxes are paid, so those issues are all right. We do have some questions regarding the potential for fire code updates, building code updates, and also Western Plains health. Therefore, our recommendation would be to approve this liquor license transfer contingent upon meeting all health, safety, building codes, and things like that. I know that the, one of those items would be the installation of a fire suppression system, as we have a change in ownership. I believe that in working with Attorney Oster, Fire Chief Bits, and also representatives from the, the new license transfer, I think they have worked out an agreement that would allow continued operation of the establishment, as long as there are contracts signed and things like that for the installation of that fire suppression system. So, I think I got it all. So if you have any questions, I know representatives are here tonight, if you have any questions for them.
How much time do they have to get the fire suppression system in?
Mayor Freilich, I would defer to John and Aaron, as they have been, I think, checking with contractors to get that system installed.
Good morning, Mayor, or good, good evening, Mayor Freilich and Commissioners. For the record, my name's John Ward, I'm an attorney, I'm working with the, the license seeker here. We have been in contact with both of the entities, I believe, that provide the fire suppression systems. They still have to come out, give us an estimate, and then we will have a schedule as to when we can get that done. Our hope is to get this done as soon as possible. We tentatively have a closing scheduled for October first, and as soon as we get information from either of those entities, we'll communicate that to city staff and, and get that all finalized. But yeah, certainly our hope here is to get it done as soon as possible, but it's just sort of subject to the schedules of, I believe it's Nardini and Nova who are the, the vendors.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Thank you, sir.
So what's the issue here?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. So in two thousand six, I believe, the International Fire Code was changed, in, as a result of the Station Nightclub Fire, public assemblies serving alcohol, the requirements got a lot more restrictive as to when a fire suppression system is required. There were several businesses at that time, when the city Mandan adopted that code, that were grandfathered in until a change of use or ownership. So this transaction triggers that building needing to be brought up to compliance, and as the representatives have mentioned, and City Administrator Newbauer has mentioned, we have been in contact. We have verbal agreement and commitment, and the, I think the need for the suppression system is understood by all parties. So as mentioned, I think the, the next step is really formalizing an agreement that's reasonable without jeopardizing safety, without jeopardizing the continuity business too much, so I think, I think a balance can be reached. I hope that answers your questions, if not, I'll stand for further.
Any questions for Chief Bits?
Thank you.
Chief, I have a question concerning worst-case scenarios. Something goes wrong, they can't get it in in time. What would, what would our contract address in a situation like that?
So, Mayor, Commissioners, I believe the question is, is if we can't come to terms on the contract, I think that would, worst-case scenario would be revoking the liquor license, but I would defer to City Attorney Oster to confirm that.
Yes, that would be one, and then also, I believe they would not be allowed to operate even without serving liquor.
Correct, I'm sorry, I failed to mention that part. Yes, we could, worst-case scenario, we could cease business operations at that location if we needed to. I don't anticipate that happening, but that's always a possibility, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Chief Bits? If not, what are your wishes?
I'll move to approve the transfer of the Class A liquor license effective October one, twenty-twenty-five, from Lonesome Dove, Inc. to Lonesome Dove, Inc., a subsidiary of Missouri Riverboat, Inc., contingent upon new ownership meeting all fire, building, health, and safety codes. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schoberg, second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioners Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number three, consider entering into a three-way agreement with TRX Developers for the construction of water and sewer related to shores of Lakewood Phase Two. Jerick?
Mayor and Commissioners, this is related to the bid opening item that I presented on previously. At that same August twenty-eighth bid opening, bids were open for the water and sanitary sewer portions of the shores at Lakewood Phase Two project, and the low bid was received, and I think by Site Works Excavation as well. And then this would be a three-way agreement that would essentially be between the city, TRX Developers, and Site Works Excavation, that would, that would, where, where TRX Developers would proceed with the private construction of water and sanitary sewer infrastructure at this location, with the city taking over ownership and maintenance after final completion and acceptance by the city. We're recommending to enter into the agreement as presented, but I can answer any questions if the commission has any questions.
Any questions for Jerick?
Jerick, this is all part of a new, a new neighborhood, if you will, construction project, so that, the cost of that will defer back to the developer?
Mayor Commissioner Schoberg, yes, this, the main difference between the water and sanitary sewer construction and the storm construction would be that the water and sanitary sewer construction would be financed upfront by the, by the private developer, and then turned over to the city after completion, where the storm sewer construction will be financed by the city, and then special assessed back to the benefiting properties. So, in essence, there is two, two different funding mechanisms, but, but in both situations, the, the costs likely go back to the benefiting properties in one way or another.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Jerick? If not, Commissioners?
I move to enter into the three-way agreement as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number four, consider selecting engineer firms for the following projects, Mandan proper Northwest, Riley?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. On August nineteenth, the commission released a request for proposals for Mandan proper Northwest area. We received seven proposals, and once we received these seven proposals, we formed a selection committee containing members from Public Works, Finance, Engineering, and Communications. Once we had formed that committee, each committee member independently and individually ranked those proposals. Those rankings then became a scale of one through seven, and the highest-ranked consultant was Moore Engineering, so we are recommending we select Moore Engineering for the Mandan proper Northwest project.
Any questions for Riley? Riley, you have a map again, that you can?
Yep, I have it pulled up here. So Northwest part of Mandan proper will be south of Division and east of Sunset and Sixth Avenue to Third Avenue Northwest, north of Fourth Street. So the construction will kind of be along these edges of these homes here.
And again, that consists of what?
That'll be a full, full-depth reconstruction, so it'll be new water mains, new streets, likely new curb and gutter, new sidewalks in the areas that need it. This area will be completely revitalized with this project.
And we're just doing preliminary work? We, we don't, where are we at with financing?
So this will just be the thirty percent engineering work to get us to the point of district creation, so we kind of needed that background engineering to do some design and preliminary work to get us to a point where we feel comfortable about what the assessments might be, as well as we put in a grant application a few commission meetings ago for the flex fund for this project, and hopefully we get accepted on that and awarded, and that would help lessen assessments in the area as well.
And do you have any public input meetings scheduled?
We have none scheduled at this time, but look for, look for some information coming out, we'll get some scheduled soon.
Okay. Commissioners?
I move to select Moore Engineering as the engineering firm to complete preliminary engineering for Mandan proper Northwest.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Roar, second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item B, master lift station interim improvements. Riley?
At that same August nineteenth commission meeting, we also released a request for proposals for the master lift station interim improvements. What that is, is there's a force main along kind of the bank of the Dead Heart here, and here's our master lift station. Public Works has experienced accelerated numbers of breaks on these twin asbestos concrete pipes, so we are looking to do a project to hopefully mitigate those breaks and mitigate the amount of time spent down here. Again, the same process happened with the selection committee. Members from Engineering, Finance, Communication, and Public Works met, there was four proposals received, and we are recommending Apex Engineering.
Any questions for Riley?
I'll move to select Apex Engineering as the consultant to complete engineering for the master lift station interim improvements.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Heinchan, second by Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Street Rehabilitation Twenty-Twenty-Six Three A, Riley?
So this was that third RFP released on August nineteenth. This is the Three A area identified in our twenty-twenty-three or four, twenty-twenty-three Street Rehab Condition Report that Moore Engineering did for us. It'll be a, essentially just the roadwork up here. It'll be either a mill and overlay or reconstruct project. The engineer on board will help us determine the scope and what's most appropriate for the roads. Again, same process with that same selection committee, and we're recommending Moore Engineering on this one as well. There was six proposals received.
Any questions for Riley? If not, what are your wishes?
Move to select Moore Engineering as the consultant to complete preliminary engineering for the two thousand twenty-six street rehabilitation project.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioners Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number five, consider petition of Street Improvement District for shores of Lake, at Lakewood Phase Two. Jerick?
Mayor and Commissioners, this is a project related to the project that we've been talking about, where we had so far discussed the storm sewer improvements and the water and sanitary sewer improvements. This would be the creation of a district that would include the above-ground improvements. Street improvements including the roadway, curb and gutter, some sidewalk, ADA ramps, streetlights, and some fencing along McKenzie Drive. This is, this would be, the cost of this is, is estimated to be about two-point-five million dollars, and we would be assessing this back to the benefiting properties in shores Phase Two, as well as some, some of the benefiting properties in future phases that benefit from the construction of Oxbow Trail and, and the lift, or I guess maybe not the lift station, the construction of Oxbow Trail and some of the fencing improvements along McKenzie Drive. It's our recommendation to approve the resolutions necessary to create the district, and I can try and answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Jerick? Any questions for Jerick?
I move to approve the resolutions creating Street Improvement District two forty.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Schoburg. Further discussion, hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioners, Brown.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number six, consider bid advertisements for Street Improvement District, SID two forty. Jerick?
Mayor and Commissioners, yes, this is a follow-up item. Um, this would be for the same Street Improvement District project that we just discussed, um, but this would be authorizing, this would be to authorize the plans and specifications and authorize, uh, the, or direct us to advertise for bids for this project. Um, if you have any questions, I can try and answer them.
Any questions for Jerick?
I'll move to approve the resolutions directing advertisement and approving plans and specs for the bids of Street Improvement District two forty.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Heinchan, second by Commissioner Rohr. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioners, Rohr.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Jerick. We will now move on to resolutions and ordinances. Second and final consideration of ordinance number fourteen-seventy-six relating to traffic and vehicles. Amy?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here tonight with a second consideration of fourteen-seventy-six. Um, this ordinance updates the, our code with recent state law changes related to traffic and vehicles. Um, I have not received any questions or comments from the first reading. I assume Chief Ziegler has not either, no.
Any questions for Attorney Oster?
I move to approve the second and final consideration of ordinance number fourteen-seventy-six as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rohr, second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number two, introduction and first consideration of ordinance number fourteen-seventy-seven relating to retirement plan eligibility. Amy Berger?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, earlier in the consent agenda, uh, we had included, uh, request for approval of amendments within the city and park districts' shared retirement plan through True Stage Financial. Um, within those updates, those included adding a Roth contribution option, allowing rollovers and in-plan Roth transfers, and also lowering the minimum eligibility age for employees from age nineteen to eighteen years old. Uh, so with that, to ensure our city ordinance is consistent with the retirement plan documents and amendments, we are requesting the first consideration and reading of ordinance number fourteen-seventy-seven. Um, again, changing that eligibility age from age nineteen to eighteen would be the only change within the ordinance. Any questions I can help answer?
Any questions for Amy?
Amy, this would be, could this be described possibly as an employee-friendly option and , uh, helping recruiting new employees?
Yes, uh, Mayor and Commissioner Schoburg definitely would just add more options for the employee and, uh, give them more options for financial planning, so yes, would be considered a positive aspect.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, Amy, is this comparable to what they do around the state in terms of age?
Yes, uh, without looking exactly, I believe it's pretty standard on, uh, what we're able to offer. It, um, also, um, makes us compliant with the Secure two-point-oh Act with, that's required for Roth and contribution catch-ups, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Amy? If not, Commissioners, what are your wishes?
I move to approve the introduction and first consideration of ordinance number fourteen-seventy-seven as presented.
Second.
We have motion by Commissioner Brown, a second by Commissioner Schoburg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioners, Heinchan.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. There is no other business tonight. The future meeting dates for the Board of City Commissioners, October seventh, twenty-twenty-five at five-thirty, October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five at five-thirty, and November fourth, twenty-twenty-five at five-thirty. As always, be kind to your neighbor and its onward and upward Mandan. This meeting is adjourned.